Good morning and welcome to today's meeting of the Suffolk Police and Crime Panel. I'm councillor Sarah Mansell, Chair of the Panel. This meeting is being broadcast live and is available to watch on the council's YouTube channel whilst we are in public session. A recording of the meeting will also be available online after the meeting. Members of the public and the press may record, film, photograph or broadcast this meeting when the public and the press are not lawfully excluded, provided due courtesy and respect are shown to others in attendance in line with the council's published guidance. Can I remind you please to speak clearly into the microphones and avoid placing things such as papers or IT equipment in front of them as this will affect the sound quality? Please turn your mobiles and laptops onto silent if you've not already done so. We are not expecting a fire drill. In the event of an alarm sounding, please leave the room by following the fire exit signs. Fire evacuation instructions can also be found on page five of the agenda. Agenda item one is the public question session. So no questions have been received from members of the public. Agenda item two, apologies for absence and substitutions.
We have received apologies for absence from councillor James Finch and also councillor Elizabeth Malfeasey.
Thank you. Item number three, declarations of interest and dispensations. There have been no declarations received in advance of the meeting. If you wish to declare an interest now, please raise your hand. I'll take that as a note. Item number four, minutes of previous meeting. If any member wishes to comment on the accuracy of the minutes of the meeting held on the 18th of July 2025, please raise your hand now. Otherwise, I will take it that the panel is content to approve the minutes as a correct record. Anyone got any issues with the minutes? No, so we just approve those. We don't have to do a formal vote. Item number five, Police and Crime Commissioners' Annual Report 2024 to 25. At Agenda item five, a panel will review the Police and Crime Commissioners' Annual Report for 2024/25, ask questions of the PCC and make any recommendations to the PCC in relation to the content of his report. I would draw the panel's attention to the area of focus which is set out on pages 15 to 16 of our papers. Before I open the floor to the panel for questions, I would like to invite the PCC to present his annual report. Over to you, Tim.
Thank you, Sarah, and good morning, everybody. So pleased to be here and to present the latest annual report which you have in your papers. This, of course, reflects on the year that has just finished back in April of this year, 31st of March actually, and is a comprehensive review of the activities that we have been delivering over that year. And, of course, it has got a forward look as well, which was written a little while ago, but that's quite an interesting and challenging time as we go forward. But I do want to highlight, I think it has been a very good year for the constabulary and ourselves. We've maintained the position of having your third lowest recorded crime rate in the country out of all 43 forces, that's England and Wales. And bearing in mind the financial resources we've got, the huge area we cover, that's very commendable, but as I've said many times at this panel, stretching back over the years, of course, recorded crime is only about half of the story, and I think we need to know that. So in comparison to other forces, we're doing really, really well, but it is the case, there is a lot more to be done. And if we take some examples, for example, of domestic abuse and violence, whilst the cases have declined, the recorded ones, nevertheless, when you're up to nearly 10,000 cases, and we know it's under-reported, this is still a very, very serious issue, not just for the victims and individuals involved, including children, domestic situations, but as I've said for a long time, domestic violence and abuse does, must affect productivity in the workplace as well. The budget did actually have a 5% increase in the council tax, which you were all, or those of you who were on the panel at the time, will remember the debates we had about that. And I think it's disingenuous of government, doesn't matter what colour they are, the reality is, they say, well, we've given policing all this extra money, exactly the same as happened for this year. Well, that was only dependent on the PCC putting up the preset by the maximum, and we can talk about that later on, but I do think we're in a difficulty, we can't keep putting taxes up all the time, because it's not true that all of that comes from central government funding. I think on the downside, the lack of progress on getting the funding formula reviewed so it's fairer for Suffolk, that continues. There's been no change on that since the general election last year, which I think is regrettable, but we are there, we will cope with what we have. And, of course, that's in a matter of allocating resources and priorities and how we go forward, looking for innovation and better use of technology, better partnerships. And there have been some highlights during the previous year, if you look at the new policing model which bedded down and has continued to bed down very well. The Right Care, Right Person initiative is now fully implemented. That was earlier this year, but during that period of the annual report, I think that was a major achievement, and I think it's recognised as being one of the best in the country. Officer numbers have, we had to keep them above 1425, and that was achieved during that year, and that's been maintained since. That's very, very good news indeed, and I think overall, probably not a lot more for me to say, you've read the report, Sandra compiled the report from Vera Sasse, and well, we did most of the work, but I think it would be fair to say, and I'm sure we'll be happy to answer any other questions about what's happening. So I think I'll leave it at that, Chairman, because there's no point in going through it all. I'm assuming you've all read it and understand it, and we're happy to take questions. I don't know, Sandra, do you want to say anything? No? Right, okay.
Thank you. So I will now open the floor to panel for questions. Has anyone got any questions they would like to ask the PCC about his report? Councillor Chester?
Hello, thank you, Chair. Going to page 16 of our papers here, and we've discussed this before, and it's mentioned here as questions to ask, is comparison benchmarking that we asked of Tim and future KPIs so we can gauge where we're progressing on certain crimes, has that been factored into future plans and is that in progress? One question, okay. Other question being, and it relates to your introduction to the report, Tim, and it's on page 22. And my thoughts on this are, based on current crime figures in Suffolk, is there an aspiration or a need for more offices with an eye towards future budget and preset costs? Is there an optimum number of police? We've got 1,400 police and 900 support staff, correct, I think. Is there a need for a greater number based on crime figures? Do you have an aspiration for more? I'd just like to know, or is there an optimum number? Thank you.
I think the first question was about KPIs. Yeah? So that can be incorporated, but a lot of this, we don't want to repeat what's done in the Accountability and Performance Papers, where with our new performance framework, that will be included, but of course, this relates to the previous year, the previous police and crime plans, so that will be included as we go forward. I think the work we've done with the panel, that was well worthwhile, so we will find a way to compile that in the next annual report, because it is important, we get that, but a lot of that will be pulled out of the APP papers, which I think you all receive, that's for those who don't know, that's six times a year, a comprehensive analysis of lots of performance data, finances and so on. So that's a well-made point, but that will be incorporated at a high level for next year. As regard the optimum number of officers, well, that's a very difficult question to answer. Bearing in mind that crime, recorded crime is about half of the total of crime, you could always do with more officers. I don't think you'd find any senior officer saying, no, we don't want any more, but we do have to live within our means, as you know, so the budget for this year, you'll remember Mike, is £195 million, quid just over, substantially increased on the previous year, but demand is ever increasing. And one of the difficulties we have with police officer numbers is, I think you'll remember this, we effectively get fined £80,000 a year for each officer under the target level of 1425. And this has a perverse influence on organisational behaviour, and I think it's the most ridiculous system that we have, because what it means is if you have to make economies, you can't make police officers redundant. So therefore, if you have an attrition level with staff, i.e. non-replacement and so on, you end up putting warranted officers doing clerical jobs, which is a completely bonkers way to run any organisation at all. But that's the system, the Home Office refuses to change it, and I would suggest that's the experience of people who've never run a business in their life, but that's just a personal view. But that's where we are. Having said all that, though, Mike, for the current year, you remember from our budget discussions last January, that under the neighbourhood policing guarantee, we've got £1.8 million extra, which came in after we'd already set the budget, the doubling of the money for that. And what that means is that we will be recruiting during this current year, an extra 17 officers and nine staff. So I think by the end of this current financial year, all things being equal, we can add 17 to 1425, coming to 1,442 officers. I expect that's what the level will be that we have to maintain going into the next financial year. I know that's quite convoluted and complex, but yeah, getting more officers is important because demand is never satisfied and the pattern of crime changes. We've got to do better on fraud, for example, online crime, cyber attacks are all very topical at the moment, and of course, that can affect individuals, not just major companies like Jaguar Land Rover, M&amp;S, et cetera. So that's where we are, we could always do with more, but we need the money to do it.
Did you want to come back?
Yes, please, Chair, thank you, Tim. So further to that, my earlier question, is there a model for police numbers per ratio of population, or is this left to the discretion of the police force or Police and Crime Commissioner to establish the numbers that are needed? Thank you.
No, there isn't a model, because if you try to compare us with the Met, which literally gets money chucked at it from central government, unlike ourselves, and you've got to remember the pattern of crime is different, the Met has responsibilities for some national or even international issues, so it's very difficult to compare. It would be better for what they classify as the most similar groups, and I'm not being flippant here, I would rather call it the least dissimilar groups, because the funding varies within that group of 10 quite significantly, as you may well know. And, of course, the pattern of crime in a big rural area like Suffolk is rather different to places, as I often say, like Manchester or Birmingham, wherever. So there isn't a fixed number, but in the report here, it does say how many numbers of population. And if we can maintain that, that's good, because we, as I say, need to do more. But a comparator of what happens is quite challenging, because of different levels of finance, different patterns of demand, different geographies, the list is huge. So it can only be a guide, but not a definitive one, whether you should have this or you should have that. So bit of a juggling act, but I hope that helps. Thank you.
Thank you. I've got councillor Beer and I've got Simon, so I'll go to councillor Beer next.
Thank you, Madam Chairman, I've got two questions regarding the report. On page 53, you've got Police Property Fund and what have you. I just wondered whether there's any update, you got to the Sudbury Police Station, whether there's any more forward of you getting that on the market or deciding to get the benefits?
I think we've got that as a verbal update later in our agenda. So did you want to do that when we do the verbal update? Or do you want to answer it now? Okay, do it now then, yeah.
Yes, that's all part of the new estate scratch being addressed at the moment, and we'll be happy to share with you later. This is certainly in time for the next one, actually, and it will be an update on where we are. And that, of course, does appear to be a nice issue.
You have another question?
Yeah, well, you wouldn't expect me to overlook the council tax question. And on page 33, you give example of how the money's made up, and my maths is not that good, but it's about 45% come from the police grant and about 40% come from the council taxpayer, which I know is all taxpayers' money. But I'd just like to know that whether you're going to really try this time not to increase the council tax going up, because it is getting beyond a joke for people, and certainly we don't have to go to the full amount every time, and we seem to have done that constantly over the last few years.
Thank you. That's a very difficult question to answer, but let me make this quite clear, I am not one who likes just to keep chucking taxes up, because I think as a nation, personally, that's my view, we have reached the limit. The real problem I've got, Peter, well, for everybody, is balancing the need for demands. Don't forget, chief councillors always want the maximum, well, they would, that's their default position, I don't necessarily agree with that. I would like to be in a position where we know we do not have to take the maximum, but I can't give that guarantee now, and I was going to mention quite a lot of detail, if I can leave that bit till we look at the financial update, because there's some very important points I'd like to share with you then. But, you know, successive governments have totally failed to address the issue of the funding formula, and I know it's not just about policing, we get a lousy deal from government for health, education, local authorities, you name it, we're at the bottom of the pile, which is unacceptable, because we pay our dues and everything like everyone else. And please remember, I know you weren't on the panel then, but the first two years I was here, I actually froze the council tax, didn't go, I know it was a long time ago, 13 years ago and 12 years ago. And yes, I really would like to be in a position where, of course, you don't have to maximise it all the time, but that does depend on government giving us a fairer deal as well. But I will talk a bit more about that later when we can really focus on it.
Can I just come in on the funding formula? Because I attended a meeting with the National Association of Police Fire and Crime Panels, and that is a regular point of discussion, and I learnt earlier this week that the sort of policy of the National Association of Panels and the National Association of Police and Crime Commissioners are also seen, because obviously there'll be winners and losers if they rejig the formula, and it appears to be it's up to individual panels and individual commissioners to lobby the government. So I just wondered, you know, have you recently written to the government about the funding formula and should we be doing so as well?
The last time I did, and I haven't written recently, because we've got yet another policing minister, so we have to do that all over again, so let them settle in for a short while and then they're very happy to do that. And the time to do that, of course, will be towards the end of November, when the budget, I think it's 26th of November, when the budget has been done, because this is another issue, by delaying the budget for yet another month, it makes it more complicated. All we know is departmental spending, well, what share we will get of that for Suffolk remains to be seen. But I did, we had a large meeting up at Wrighton, the College of Policing HQ, back in the summer, and I did make the point very forcefully there, there were Home Office officials there. Yes, they listened, whether they heard what we were saying is a moot point. So yes, the pressure still keeps putting on through the APCC, individuals to MPs, and obviously with support from yourselves.
So maybe when you do write, if you're going to write again in November, maybe we also need to do it at the same sort of time to reinforce it? I mean, would that, you know, we're here to help you and we clearly want them to rejig that formula, especially as I understand it, somebody did work it all out and it's just never been implemented, and of course, time's moved on, probably needs redoing again now, but maybe if we can do them at the same sort of time, it may maybe have more impact, I don't know.
I think it's worth.
But if you can, if you can let us know and then we can draft a letter at the same sort of time, so they get them, you know, within the same week, and if everyone does it then, maybe, maybe they'll get fed up with all the posts.
Very happy to do that, Sarah, and of course, we've got a new Home Secretary as well, so, yeah. And I do think we need to emphasise that good policing does help everybody's wellbeing, but of course, more particularly, if you want to get economic growth, you need to keep crime down and bring offenders to justice, et cetera, et cetera. And so policing, as I've said for many years, does have a direct impact, if it's done properly, on helping economic development, and my goodness me, don't we all need that? So no, let's coordinate and see what we can do. Happy to do that.
Thank you. Simon?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I've got three areas I'd just like to talk about first, I think. Thank you ever so much for the report, I enjoyed reading it, and I particularly liked these quotes from individuals, I think that made it more realistic, so actually to, you know, what our communities had said about it. I did find it quite a long read, forty-six pages, and I know it's an annual report, it's really difficult to get any shorter, but I think if we, for future, we could, you know, I'm thinking about reading it as a member of the public, you know, am I going to pick up and read? Probably 44 pages, because you've got covers and et cetera, but there's a couple of areas I'd like to, I think in your intro, Tim, you talk about the new county policing model, and there's been really good evidence since 2023 that's been implemented. I didn't really see anything, though, in the body of the report, I think it would be nice to celebrate a little bit more, because you talk about it in a paragraph, I think, in there, but I think it would be nice, and you say how businesses and our communities are really kind of benefiting from it, but it wasn't really the evidence, and I think it would be nice to have an area on that, and you talk about the Right Care, Right People model as well, you know, they're key projects, and though you do talk about them in your intro, Tim, I think maybe in the body of the report, it would be nice to celebrate, you know, it's done some really good stuff, and this is the evidence, this is what we've spoken to, and I just didn't bring that out enough from the report. That's the first point. Going to, this comes specific, on page 22, when you talk about, of 22 of your report, sorry, not of the agenda pack, 40 of the agenda pack, I think. Yep, so you've got 22 of your annual report and page 40 of the agenda pack. You talk about the key principles for commissioning, and I think your point, first bullet point is ensuring a balance of generic and specialist services based on need. I've never addressed it before, what would be really nice in the report, to actually see what the needs in Suffolk are? These are the risks, these are the issues, just key ones, and this is what I've done in 2425 to address those. That was missing a little bit from me, because you've done some really good stuff, it's the what is that, what is the need that's addressing? And I think that would be really good to say, we've done this and this has really improved it for the people of Suffolk. You know, right care, we're now using much more effective use of people with the right skills, not tying up police officers, you know, things like that, because, you know, 80, and please don't tell you, because, you know, 85% of police officers' time was taken up dealing with health, mental health, kind of, and wellbeing issues. You know, so we identify there's an issue, we introduce right care, and that's addressed. Do you see where I'm coming from? It's just about the, what are the issues and setting it out? Because you say, based on need, I'm reading it blind as to what are the needs, if I can make my own assumption on that, and we all have our own personal views. It's just, if we, that could be, you know, probably not for this one now, but for future iterations, where they could just say, really clear, these are the issues addressing the communities of Suffolk, this is what I did about it in 2425, or whatever year, to deal with those, and this is the success. Well, these are things I've still got to do, because, you know, not everything works, I accept that. Does that make sense?
That's a fair point. I am, doing, these are the needs of Suffolk as a whole, it's quite in it, because of the different pockets of deprivation, there was a crime all over the place, so if I'm just thinking of some of the commissioning, I'm thinking, I'm on my feet here, I'm sitting down. So if you look, for example, at domestic abuse and violence, violence against women and girls, we could get an overall picture of this is the situation Suffolk, and perhaps get a link, we'll have to talk amongst ourselves how we would do it, because we don't want to make it too long, you could look at that, but then, of course, there are pockets where it's particularly bad or worse, or there's very little, then you've got the rural versus the urban dimension. So a general picture, yes, we could probably do that, but within it, it hides an awful lot of detail and different emphasis. So if you look at, and I'll just carry on on the domestic abuse and violence, so I think there are, there's the IDVA service, which is pan Suffolk, and that's far, far bigger than at Worsom when I start, I think we've got 15 or 16 advisers, 13 years ago we just had one. But if you look at all the different organisations we work within that area, so from all over Suffolk, so up in the Low Stofft area, there's the Wavely Forum, we come down to Lighthouse from Isad, Restore, Restitute in East Suffolk is another group we work with, Compassion over at Sudbury, former Bury Women's, so getting an overall picture is one thing, and we'll have to see how we could actually do that. And when it looks at grants for crime prevention, and it's not just about young people, we're also plugging gaps, for example, mental health, we did that over in Bury where we gave Suffolk Mines some grants, because there just isn't the capacity. So we need to look at that carefully, you don't want to make the report too long.
No, and I suppose I was coming from, you know, what are the key issues? Because you take domestic violence, violence against women, you know, we all think they're really key. I don't know, is there an issue in Suffolk? Now, I'm sure there is, but it's not, it's not set out for me to see as a member of the public, or, you know, there is an issue. So it might be, actually, that's the thing you choose to focus on, rather than then, there might be something much bigger, and I know, shameless, we talk about road safety and, you know, so it's identifying, you know, on a very, and it is an overview, I do accept that, but actually, these are the key issues, and this is why I am either commissioning or focusing the constabulary to deal with these areas, because they are a key issue within Suffolk. Rural crime, for example, Metropolitan Police probably haven't got a major issue with rural crime, so I wouldn't expect to see that in theirs, but for us, it's a little bit of evidence, why is it, just an overview, and this is what I'm doing about it, and this is why I've chosen to address this.
Because that's covered in various accountability papers, maybe there's a way we can get a link, so like, for example, even annual reporting, the rural crime, where you look at the data and what's being done, and various new initiatives, capacity, et cetera. The same is done for domestic abuse, if you're looking, for example, like Police Power Stop and Search again, getting all the data put in there, I think probably a summary link to say, look, these are important issues, but we need to look at it carefully, so we don't make this report like a Dickens novel.
Yes, yeah, thank you, and I think for me, it's just, and I accept they are in other reports, I think, you know, I'm looking at it from a member of the public, I'm not probably going to follow a link or go into the APP reports or go into the, you know, it's about setting out, you know, it's your marketing document in a way, isn't it? This is what I did, this is what I've done for the communities of Suffolk in the last year, this is the success, and these are things I still need to do, you know, it's not. This is the success. And these are things I still need to do, you know, it's not certain accepting that everything is going to be done in one year. I accept that. Thank you for that, Tim, just for in that consideration. I think that's useful. And my third point, my computer just died on me. It was around kind of data and some of the data within some of the areas, I think, looking at pages kind of twenty six, twenty seven. It was useful. There was kind of a couple of areas. I mean, you talk about on page of your report, page twenty six.
Is that in the report?
In the report, sorry, twenty six in the report, forty four in the pack. Sorry, I had to give you two numbers. I've written it as the.
Oh, yeah.
Talking about use of victim services, it said a hundred percent said they were satisfied with the service. There was only forty three respondents, which I thought was quite a low number, if I'm honest. So it is about, so you say ninety five, sorry, nine hundred, nine thousand five hundred victims were contacted. What I'm not sure is how many people actually use the service, because it said a hundred percent said they were satisfied than the respondents. Now, I don't know, those nine thousand five hundred, five hundred may have used it. I don't know. So it's just saying, is forty three a high or a very low number? So it's just kind of providing a little bit more data, if you like, behind some of the figures. And it's the same on page twenty seven, when you talk about the number of BME community who are using PCC funded services, which sounds really positive. The two questions there is, I'm not sure of the starting point. So you say seven point nine percent from the BA community are now using all of PCC funding, use services. I don't know what it was last year. And I know Mike has talked about benchmarking in the past. And I don't know, as a, the other issue there for me is, from the victims of crime perspective, is there a higher percentage of BME community that are victims of crime? So actually, the seven point nine percent as part of the victims is actually quite low. Or is it really positive? So I'm just trying to bring out a little bit. So there's a generic thing around the data is, let's celebrate the really positive, you know, but let's provide that information that makes it, doesn't ask, leave me asking questions, really, I suppose, is where I was. So it's just if you could look at those and just say, you know, provide a little bit more data. And again, maybe not for this one, because that's, that's quite a long task to do. And I know you want to get the report out. But maybe for future years, just thinking about how you use data in that really positive way. Thank you.
Just a little bit of feedback on that. If we look at any complaints or matters raised directly with us, I actually can't recall one that's been raised about the Norfolk and Suffolk victim care. Let's not say it can't be improved. I think one of the other issues just are worth, again, we don't want to make this far too long either, but those of you who have, will have noticed in the APP papers, I'm not using that as an excuse, but the Victims' Code of Practice compliance, which is statutory obligation, there have been some issues with IT on that, with the Athena package, and making sure that there have been some referrals, and whether there's the option to opt in or opt out. And I'm afraid the data there from the Constabulary hasn't always been quite as straightforward. It's not necessarily their fault, it's the software programme. But I think what I would like to do reassure you people, Liz has regular meetings with Norfolk and Suffolk Victim Care, a new provider starting, actually started, I think, this month. But that's something now would be a good opportunity to take that forward. You've always got to bear in mind, of course, you can, you do need the data, that's very important, but the time taken to do all these surveys, even if they're arse, and then collate it, and there's definitely a balance to be struck. But we do have regular updates, but Liz does that, I don't personally get involved in this as a need to, which I hasn't been, looking at performance, making sure there's referrals and signposting to relevant agencies. So I think overall, it works very well. But I do take your point, if we can find a way for future years now, also with a new provider, it may well be something we can look at. And it may, game with automation, it may be easy to do that straight away.
Yeah, thank you. Thank you for that. And I think, you know, I'm not, what I'm not saying is the victim care service is not a great service. What I'm just saying is, is actually providing that evidence, you know, again, the end, the purpose of an annual report is kind of, you know, that, it's you celebrating success, but telling the public and the communities what you've done, and what you've done for them, and how you've improved it, and think, and you say, what's not worked so well. That's a really interesting point just on that, because I think there's a bit of contradiction in some. So the APP report talks, and maybe a bit of clarification on this, talks about eighty one point nine percent compliance with Victims' Code. But in your intro, you say it's in the, it's in ninety percent. So there's a bit of a contrast. And I didn't know whether that was the issue you're just talking about.
That's what it was. Of course, now it has improved. So what happens in the recent reports is not what affects what happened in that year.
Yeah, but I was looking at, so the APP report is from June twenty four to June twenty five. This is, I presume, is from April to April. So they shouldn't, there was almost a ten percent disparity. So that seemed a bit strange.
No. Well, it has improved a lot recently. But by the time we had that information for this, I was only going on what we had. So yeah, that's fair comment.
I just think it'd be worth looking at that intro, because it, because your A and P report definitely says eighty one percent. And I just think it could be questioned.
Yeah, yeah, okay. Now we can have a look at that.
Thank you. I got Councilor Cook.
Sorry, I just wanted to make sure I hit the right button. Following on from that point, I think Simon makes a good point, in so much as I think the information that's provided is correct, but it's a case of how it's communicated, isn't it? So you don't want members of the public asking, it's a question that I I've highlighted in the report as well, that, which led me to some confusion in my mind. It might just be better to make the express point of the change from figures from the previous year to the performance in the current reporting period. Also, again, following on from Simon's point, in relation to the online survey, in relation to the precept, there was a response of, from four hundred and sixty five people, which presumably is out of the whole audience of Suffolk. And I just wondered to ask a question about the mechanisms used for communicating and publicising these opportunities, because there is a, it appears to be a relatively low rate of response in relation to the victims' work. And this seems to be a very low response in relation to the constitution of Suffolk. So I just wonder if it's something which your team considers and looks at in terms of increasing awareness amongst the public. I mean, I put my hands up, I'm new to the council, I'm new to this panel, and I wasn't aware of this. But I did also speak to my husband, who's quite active in relation to matters of community, and he wasn't aware of it either. But we will make sure we keep our eye out. And I'd be interested in the timings of this sort of thing being available. So someone reading this report will say, oh, I've missed it this year, but it's going to be done again around X point next year. So I'll hit my eye out. And just one other issue that I wanted to raise was in relation to correspondence topics, and the breakdown of the subjects areas. I mean, it looks like relatively small number of correspondents over the course of the period as well, eleven hundred. Sorry, I apologise. Page thirty six of the, page thirty six of the report, fifty four of the pack. Yeah, and I just wondered about the breakdown there. So operational other is the largest category. And I assume that's in relation to, well, I don't know, my assumption is that must relate to all other offences types, for example, other than road traffic, ASB, burglary, drugs, fraud, business crime, et cetera. And I just wonder if it's possible to get some further insight into that, that breakdown. It did also seem, the categorisation of antisocial behaviour with burglary and drugs, is that a national approach to how you match the subjects? Or is that something that we've adopted locally? Because it seems a little bit of very different types of behaviour. Because what I see as antisocial behaviour is very different to what I think of the violation of a burglary, particularly a home burglary, residential burglary, or the scourge of drugs, whether, I mean, does drugs encompass simple possession, possession with intent? Does it encompass the county lines type behaviour? And I might be going a bit too much detail, but this is sort of trying to gain my understanding as much as anything.
Can I just come in on the subject of public consultation? That is often a big topic. And we did discuss it when we discussed the budget, I think, because we get your results of your questionnaire. And we had a big, big discussion of it back in February. So thank you for raising it, because you're new to the panel. But it is something that is often a hot topic, is getting public engagement. So I'm not sure if Tim wants to comment on it now, but we did discuss it to some extent in February.
Sandra can do all of that, because Sandra arranged it all, done it every year for the last thirteen years. But then I'll comment after, then we'll come to the other bit. Adele, all right?
No, thank you. Without going into all the detail of the precept survey, I think I could just very simply say, the figures were very low this year. We have in the past had two thousand, which some might still say isn't massive compared to other, to the amount of people that live in the county. But it's, it's a reasonable cross section of people for that two thousand. The reason we were disappointed, well, I personally was disappointed this year, but we were also consulting on the police and crime plan. So we had two major consultations on the go, almost overlapping. And I think that had a detrimental impact on the amount of people that took part in our survey this year. For next year, though, we do survey between, once, once we know what, where the budget is, which we get our, we get the, the information from the Treasury, the week before Christmas. So we consult as soon after the New Year as we can. It's normally the second to January. And that survey is open until the day before the panel. We literally keep it open for as long as we can. We do send it out via social media, press releases, through the Constabulary, and they have massive, massively more followers than we do, as you can imagine. We also send it out to the democratic services of each of the councils, and ask them to send it to the councillors in the county, and the districts, and the borough, with a specific request to the councillors to circulate it within their own networks, because the councillors are actually really good friends to us from that respect, the ones that do it, should I say, because that is, you know, that is a massive network then that it goes out through. So you will hear about it through the panel this year. I know that councillor Cook would have picked it up previously, husband, and has been very supportive. But I think it is about just watching out for that January, early January, and anything, anything all of you can do to help circulate that information would be really gratefully received, because that's where we get the numbers from. We rely on you to help us on that one. Thanks.
On the grouping of your correspondence, I think that was your other question, wasn't it?
Yeah, I was just going to come to that. Yeah, yeah. Yeah. So on the correspondence, well, it just, so the former police authority, which is the predecessor to ourselves, they may have got one or two letters at most a month. So that's a pretty big increase. And that's been fairly consistent over the last few years. I think the answer here, Adele, is you can divide it up as much as you like. And part of the difficulty here is, if I were to take, say, county lines, now who's responsible for dealing with county lines? And that's a moot point, because we all are. And when you look here, we've got other agencies, it's quite difficult to appoint, well, say it's definitely this one and not that one. So we can have a look at that. And antisocial behaviour is, you know, all responsible authorities have to deal with it. It's not just about policing. And again, with drugs, that's quite a popular subject. It certainly comes up in all our public meetings. But who is actually responsible for, for dealing with that? So we'll have, we'll take it away and have a look. It depends how much detail you want. And then, of course, you can have what you like. But then what are you going to do with it and how, how that would help? But yeah, we can refresh that. I absolutely get the point. But it's exactly what you want and how much detail you go into. Again, coming back to Simon's point, we don't want to make the report too long. There's a balance to be struck. But we'll have a look at it, certainly.
Just to say, I'll follow up on the point in relation to the survey and awareness of it. I'll take that away if that's okay. I think the thing that jumped out to me was, because of the priority in relation to knife crime, and the amount of publicity and awareness of knife crime, I suppose what made me look at this, this list of subjects, was the fact that there, that that wasn't referred to. And I appreciate that's probably caught within the general category. But that's, that's just something that sort of surprised me that it wasn't a factor. And it might be that you don't get a lot of correspondence on it. And that might well be the situation. Maybe it's something we hear more about in the media, and less about in terms of the communication that goes through to Tim directly. But that's, that's what the start point for me was.
And very quickly, on knife crime, the recorded rate of knife crime in Suffolk has declined markedly over the last two years. In fact, on the ONS data here, we have the, well, we're at the top, top, nearly at the top of the list when it comes to national rank change. We've had the biggest reduction of anywhere in the country, according to the ONS data. But again, it is all about the balance of how far do you go, and how much do you want to break it down? The ONS data is there for everybody to see. So, but we'll have a look at that. I think we can do that, can't we? Yeah, we're happy to do that. But we always like to have constructive engagement here, because it's about how do you make it better? And we're all on the, all on the same side for that. So that's not a problem at all. But thanks for raising it.
Thank you. Council Bennett.
Thank you, Chair. Good morning, everyone. And thank you, Tim and team, for the report. Councilor Cook has raised one aspect that I wanted to explore. And so I wanted to talk a little bit more about antisocial behaviour. And the reason it's related to what councillor Cook mentioned is because when I was seeking to, you know, think about what the trends are, how my, my feeling is, and from speaking to people across the social strata, across where I live, is antisocial behaviour is really, really important. It's the thing that bothers me. So Suffolk does benefit from a low crime rate. We have that, that situation, which is great. But antisocial behaviour, in its, all its very various forms, really bothers people, from people who are renting in a small rent place, who have people with a snake living next door, it climbs through the letterbox, to somebody leaving human waste on the slide at Langer Park in Felixstowe, to lads climbing on the shelter in the Spa Gardens and throwing tiles down, on the whole range of it. We know how, but some of it borders on criminal behaviour. And it really affect, and people are always saying to me, and I would imagine to other people, where are the police? What are the police doing it? And there's a feeling that the police don't take it seriously enough. And I know it's a, it's a movable feast, it's a slippery subject, et cetera. But then when I looked at this list, as councillor Cook, it's difficult to pin that down. So I was looking to see, now, am I right in this hunch that ASB is important? When I look at that list, I can't, I can't tell, because it's mixed in with burglary and drugs. And I would imagine that when you're getting a letter, or an email, or a phone call about somebody driving late at night with their exploding exhaust, or driving down a narrow street without their headlights on at two o'clock in the morning, that isn't drugs, and that isn't burglary. So I think what I would say, rather than talking about how much detail, it's not about detail, what it is, is to make those, make those stats helpful and useful to people. And that's why I think what councillor Cook and myself would be saying is, if we want to know, is ASB important? You know, is it backed up with what people are writing to you about? That needs to be separated out as much as possible, so that we can say, ah, okay, actually, this isn't bothering people, or it is. So to make that list as useful as possible, there are three categories, I think, there that have other, or two. There's an other, which is very general, and there's other agencies. It's just not as useful as it could be. So that's one aspect of what I wanted to say. But I also wanted to, yeah, so to take, in a way, it's like taking, making ASB, taking it a bit more seriously, because it really bothers the whole range of society. And specifically on that, on the previous page, on page thirty five of the report, the Safer Streets Initiative, looks like there's some really good work done there. And all three of the projects involve a focus on antisocial behaviour. I guess that's because, as I've said, it bothers the people across the district, across the area. But it also says that these projects will continue until match funding completes in September of this year. So presumably, these have finished. So my sort of broader question would be then, what are the, what are the plans to continue that work? Maybe what were the results? Are there any indications of the results and the sort of trends from those projects as to what are the areas of antisocial behaviour? And how does the Constabulary plan to, to do more, to head things off and deal with them? So people feel safe, because I think there's a lot of, you're kept awake at night, you're feeling intimidated, you just that feeling of malaise in the public realm, because all these things are happening, and it's, and it really bothers people.
Okay, now, well, obviously, Seamus, ASB is taken very seriously. But you will know, of course, that the local government authorities, they are responsible authorities. So it's also incumbent on them to work together with policing to tackle it. So it's not just the policing issue. And I've got to make that absolutely crystal clear from day one. But you'll be aware that we do have reports, I think, on antisocial behaviour twice at our accountability and performance panels, where we look at it in depth, where we analyse each of the three policing areas in depth. I'm not saying we go right down to individual district ward level, but it is taken very, very seriously. And that's why with a lot of our grants that we give in for specific areas, we do what we can certainly to help. And it's not just about young people, as you rightly say, you get people. And it's not just about young people, as you rightly say, you get people who are older who should jolly well behave better as well. So I don't want to label young people, that would be completely unreasonable and inaccurate. So I think, yes, it is taken very seriously. I get the point about looking at the correspondence. We can, we can look at.
I'll answer.
You can answer that one.
Yeah, shall I do that one first?
Yeah, go and do that, and then I'll come back to this.
And just for the correspondence, obviously, these, these are the issues that the public have contacted the P C C's office about. It doesn't necessarily reflect the, the issue itself from a policing perspective because, you know, as you can imagine, if somebody's causing antisocial behaviour in Felixstowe or anywhere else, you'd hope people would phone nine 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 or one oh one, depending on what the issue is, contact the Constabulary directly. This is people contacting our office to tell us about the experience that they've had with the Constabulary rather than about the issue itself. So we wouldn't have anywhere near as much correspondence about these criminal areas that would have been dealt with directly by the Constabulary. This is just people that have written to the P C C to talk about their experiences in these fields. So it isn't, it isn't a marker on the impact that these crimes are having on the county. So that's, you know, it's a slightly different. And also on the operational others, we do get letters that are very specifically about an operational issue that impacts on an individual, which obviously we can't list here. So those come under the, the operational others, they're, they're issues that would have probably gone straight back to the Constabulary, they wouldn't have been issues that we could have dealt with. So I do appreciate that it is quite difficult to, to allocate a topic for each of these, but hopefully the, the idea that, you know, that these are people talking to us about A S B or about fraud, it's not about the crime itself because that would have been reported to the Constabulary.
Thanks, Sandra. I mean, if I remember, if I'm a member of the public reading this, I would like to know, so, so that could be, for example, that the police haven't dealt with A S B, that they might write to you with that subject. But that is a separate issue to whether they've got, they've been burgled, their neighbour's been burgled, or what's, they, these appear, and I think to councillor Cook and maybe to others as well, that they are, they are separate issues. And I doubt you've got correspondence that has all three of those things together. So it's just a small, maybe it's a small thing, but it seemed to me indicative of perhaps A S B being a n other that's put in with burglary and drugs, but actually it's a really separate issue. Driving at night with, you know, exploding exhaust is different to burgling someone's house.
Yeah, I take that point completely, and I think we could break those down. But I was just making the point that the people are, they're not reporting a crime, they are just talking to us about that particular issue. But I think they're two separate issues, but we could look at breaking them down for the next one.
Did you want to come in on something related to that categorisation before we?
All right.
He's been waving to me, and I think he wants to directly relate to this topic. Is that right?
Yes, thank you, Tim. Yeah, just coming back to my previous point, I think that would help address around the need, the specific need, because if A S B is a significant need and is identified as an issue, that would be picked up in there. And actually, you, the evidence then is some of the correspondence relating, now, some of that could be positive correspondence, some of it could be negative correspondence. We don't, we don't know, we don't. But, but I, I agree totally with my two colleagues, you say, about breaking it down. But I think if you linked that, again, to the previous conversation around need, then actually that's, that's part of the evidence that breaks it down and could link the two together, if that makes sense. So I just wanted to come back on that point. Thank you.
So did, did you want to come back, Tim, anyway, about, about that topic and, and about Seamus's?
I was also going on to Seamus's other points, but no, we, we will take it, take, take that away and we, we'll have a look at it. If I remember correctly, and please don't hold me to this, I think the level of recorded A S B cases, which are not recorded as crimes, I think we've got to be really clear about that, I think over the last two years it's declined by about a third. Now, that doesn't mean the absolute level of A S B has come down by that. I'm always very, very clear, it's what people report. So we've done what we can to make it much easier for people to report. That's a whole another subject, but we'll be here till this time tomorrow if we talk about all that. But I just want to emphasise it's important. As I said, local authorities are responsible authorities. Also, excuse me, community safety partnerships have a role in that. What are they doing collectively, multi-agency approach to deal with it, but also to prevent it? So I think that's a really important point. And if I can just go on to Seamus's other points, we talked about the Safer Streets campaign. I think we got a hundred and fifty thousand quid from the Paul Business Rates Fund for that last year, which was very welcome. So it was a degree of match funding, that's how it was arranged. And yes, it's very successful. When we get the full review of how it's, what the lessons learned are, of course, we always take that into account. So it's obviously too early to say that at the moment because it's only just about finished. But moving on, we've just completed at the end of September, the Safer Streets Summer Campaign, which is a different initiative. There was no funding for that, by the way, unlike the other schemes. And literally only a few days after that's completed, that was for nine particular towns across Suffolk, including Felixstowe. And we have just heard there is the intention, the Home Office would like to see a campaign on a similar basis carry on during the winter. Now, we don't have any more detail about that at the moment, I'm afraid, because we only just had a letter and what that means to the Home Office. We'll see it in hard print first because things move around ad nauseam. Hotspot policing, of course, again, has been designed to really focus on areas with high levels of antisocial behaviour. So we did have a million pounds for that this year, which we also had last year, so that, that's been good. And as you all know, Seamus, the Clear Hole Build Initiative, that's not just about antisocial behaviour, that's more to do with violent crime, high harm, crime, drug dealing, organised crime groups. And I think we're just about to get into the build stage. Felixstowe has one, in Ipswich has one, been in Newmarket. So I think that initiative, I went to the meeting in Ipswich, well, Sandra came as well, didn't you, in Burlington Road that month ago? Something like that. These are really important initiatives. And I know I say this all the time, it is also a question of with the resources we've got, what do you prioritise? And I know that's the same for everything, but please remember, I also get what are you doing about fraud, domestic abuse, domestic violence, violence against women and girls, burglary, shop retail, crime, theft, intimidation. And with the resources we've got, it's a bit of a juggling act. Now, I could just sit here and say, well, it's up to the chief constable to sort it out. But again, you have to have a reasons to why that is more important or less important than others. So getting that balancing act right is going to be a challenge anyway. This is where leadership comes in. And I think going forward, one of the things we are doing this year, we've got some round tables, we're in the middle of, how do we actually do farm law on crime prevention, which is a key objective in our police and crime plan going forward? And that includes residivism. Not helped, of course, with the enormous court spatlog. I could go on and on about all this, but I won't. I'm just trying to paint a picture. Yes, everybody wants this done now, it's trying to get the balance right. And that's something I think everybody tries really hard to do. But please remember, when it comes to A S B, it's not just about policing, we've all got a responsibility as of local authorities and everybody else. So I could say, well, what are your antisocial behaviour officers doing about it? Have they come to see me or us and the team or whatever? But that's not a criticism, but those are the sorts of things that they have an equal say in that as well. But when it comes to real enforcement, obviously policing does have a major role. I'm not for a moment trying to say that that isn't relevant because it is.
Did you want to come back on that, councillor Bennett? And then we've got councillor Harson.
Yeah, thank you, Tim, that's really, really helpful. I think there's one area of A S B that I do think is police, and that is relating to the highways and antisocial driving. And that is one area that I, I do feel that does seem to be on, on the increase anecdotally with all sorts of weird stuff going on late at night, keeping people awake, very dangerous driving, really upsetting neighbourhoods, from parking HGVs outside people's houses to driving cars, you know, that area is. And so when the police, so visibility of police, actions by the police on that area, I, I mean, certainly in, in Felixstowe, that is a persistent and right across from south to north, the whole, the whole town. So that's just an observation that that area, and I don't really know if that's in A S B or in speeding or, you know, that, but it is an area that it does seem to be more and more prevalent.
On that one, I think it's really important that your community policing officer told about that. As I've always said for years, if you're not getting the response you need, then please write in to us and we'll follow it up for you because, yeah, they can't be everywhere, I know that, but it is a confounded nuisance. I absolutely get that. And I can think personally of someone who lives in the next village, he must have a motorbike with about five exhaust pipes on it or something, and he goes past every day at about five in the morning. Yes, and of course you've got to catch him at the right, anyway, but I do take the point, it is. And by the way, one other thing, when we're getting these various diversions organised by national highways, be it on the A fourteen, A twelve, A eleven, they are supposed to consult the Constabulary on the routes. And I do know, for example, when the A fourteen has been shut at Ipswich and they have, for example, traffic diverted through Clayton, I've been through there two or three times, and very often there is a police enforcement, safety camera van or police car there as well monitoring it. So it is done. But yeah, if you've got specific areas, that's the way to talk to the local Constabulary Community Policing Officer. Otherwise, if you're not getting anywhere, give us a bell.
Thank you. Councillor Harson.
Apologies for prolonging antisocial behaviour, I think it's a favourite subject of most councillors. In Ipswich, we seem to be suffering with young boys mainly, not actually from Ipswich, they're coming up from Kent, all over the place. And I've forgotten what they call them, urban something or other, and they're on top of all these vacant buildings. So I'll use the Great White Horse in the middle of the town as an example. Not only are they causing a lot of property damage, but they're also putting their lives at risk. And the new owner of that building has been in touch, obviously, with the Constabulary and says that, you know, he was, I don't know whether it was an officer, I don't know, but apparently the answer was, well, don't worry about it too much, they go back to school next week and that will stop it all. And then the next thing you read in the paper is they're down at the Tolly Cobbled Building, which is terribly dangerous, right on top of that roof with a sheer drop down to the bottom. And, you know, they're, they're young lads, fourteen, twelve, fourteen. I don't know what the answer is, I just wondered if you were aware of it, which you're nodding, you obviously are.
I'm, thank, thank you, Liz, yes, and I'm very well aware of it. I've actually spoken directly, in no uncertain terms, I'll leave it at that, to the Assistant Chief Constable, saying, you need to deal with this and sort it. Don't want any excuses because they shouldn't be there anyway. And it's not a matter of just displacing them. And I'm afraid, give them a warning once or twice and that's it, but otherwise then you need to do some proper enforcement. Because if they are that age, and obviously I haven't seen them, and I know you mentioned the Great White Horse, I tell, but it's the principle of when they go to other places, and it didn't, it doesn't necessarily need to be just in Ipswich, it could be anywhere. So as a principle, I have said to the Assistant Chief Constable, you need to take very firm action wherever it occurs in Suffolk. If it's an ongoing problem, please let me know, and I will certainly have further words. I will leave it at that. Sarah.
Thank you. Anybody else got any questions? Should I see your hand, councillor Connolly?
My pleasure, is that that one? Hello? Tim, yeah, I'm just particularly interested in the commissioning that you do, you know, you hand out quite substantial grants to numerous organisations. And I just wonder how you set about monitoring the work that they do? How do you know that they've delivered on your ambitions when you give them the money?
Well, Stephen, we have always monitored it very carefully, we're not there just chucking out public money willy-nilly. And I know you weren't saying that. So we, in most cases, give the, give the money retrospectively, it depends what it is. So if, I'll use the I V contract because I think that's the biggest one we do, that's half a million quid a year. And that is a contract, it's first one in the country, it was done for three years with the option to extend it for two, so they've got certainty. And I think there's a quarterly meeting, if I remember correctly, on the number of people that have seen, the number of people helped, et cetera. So that is done very, and we've got, just so you know a little bit more detail here, we now have four specialist I Vs, one for same-sex offences, mental health, young people, and ethnic minorities. Because there can be differences in the, the work that's required there and the problems that the victims have faced, but that's monitored on the basis of every quarter. When it comes to other grants, so for example, another one that we do all over Suffolk with the biggest funders, I think of Positive Futures Catch twenty-two, they put in a comprehensive report, also on a quarterly basis, and they then do, each of them then has to do an annual report that comes in to us. And I have to say, Positive Futures, the data that they supply to us, I think is second to none. Very, very good, and it's county-wide. When it comes to specific grants, be it for a one-year or two-year, going on to say our Crime Disorder Reduction Grant, that is monitored, that's why we employ, if you like, we'll work with the Suffolk Community Foundation, and that's where the chairs of the CSPs, they all help make the decision. So Ipswich, East Suffolk and Western Suffolk, I think they call it now as opposed to just West Suffolk because that covers, well, you're on the Shottley Peninsula.
It goes all the way to Shottley Peninsula, Western Suffolk, yeah.
Yeah, well, Shottley isn't exactly in the west, is it? But anyway. And that depends on what the grant's for. Sometimes we will give the funding if they ask for it for a year, or say, depending on performance, you can have it in two six-month tranches. Depends on what the history is, and that's why the Suffolk Community Foundation's knowledge of these voluntary groups and charities is very important. And of course, it depends on the amount of money. So it is monitored regularly, and there have been occasions where people haven't fulfilled it and it's stopped, so they haven't had all the money upfront. So we take it very, very seriously, and it's also the case that we have internal audit looks at our grants, and I'm happy to say, I think ever since we started, to coin a phrase, it's always come out with five gold stars. And that's a tribute, nothing to do with me, that's the team that does all that. And again, that input you see from the CSPs is invaluable because sometimes you can match it with other funding. I'll give you an example, in Ipswich, the divert programme, we did Ipswich Town Football Club's Community Foundation, we put ten thousand quid into that for the first example, that worked very well, for really difficult adolescents, boys and girls who completely lost their way. And it's not about an old boy like me going along and talking to them, that's where they use the football stars and specialist youth workers. And as a result of that, and it's worked very well, they asked if we could renew the funding, which we are doing for this current year, and because it has worked so well, and I met a guy from the Premier League Community Foundation, when Ipswich lost at home to Leicester last year, I don't start me on that one. And actually, we're putting in eighteen thousand quid for that, and that's being matched by the Premier League, and that was all based on data performance. So I can absolutely assure you, we do go through that with a fine-tooth comb, and it is certainly not a free-for-all. And Solskjaer, we've given them a three-year deal, for example, Suffolk Lowland Search and Rescue, that came from the Police Property Fund for this year. They save both farm rescue and policing and other emergency services a huge amount of time. And the cost of their work, they're all volunteers, is peanuts compared to if you had employees doing it, and you wouldn't have the capacity. And again, they put in an annual report, performance. So whilst there's a commitment to a three-year funding, it is dependent on getting the data through. So I hope that's reassuring. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else got any questions? Thank you. I, I would like to say, although this is a forty-six-page document, I think it is actually quite readable. So I'm going to congratulate you on, on making it readable. I don't like long documents, but it, it, it flows quite well, actually, and I like, I like Simon, I like the, the quotes as a bit of anecdote about what, what your funds have done. And I completely agree with councillor Connolly's comment about, about the monitoring of that, those funds. And I just wonder, you clearly are on top of it, but are the public aware of, of the outcomes of that fund? I mean, you know, is there, do those organisations themselves publish their, what their success is on the website? I'm not expecting you to, but do, can the public find out if that money was well spent? I mean, we've got data here about number of people who are engaged, but, but has it actually reduced their level of antisocial behaviour or whatever?
Well, we'll have a look at that because it, I mean, as I said earlier, and I do pick up on Simon's point being, we don't want to make it eighty, ninety, hundred pages long, which is always possible, you know, whatever you like, but then people won't read it all. I'm not suggesting, no, no, I'm not saying you're doing that, Sarah, but no, if there are links you could put in, because there are, we do look at all that regularly. I mean, you could put a link, for example, on the latest audit report on it for those who really want to read it, it's all there. But I, I do want to say this, I mean, Sandra's done all the work, work for this, and I do want to pay tribute to the way it's been put together. There's always a little bit of a learning curve, it's a good job that Sandra's doing it, not me, because it'd be all over the place otherwise. So those of us who write our parts for it, myself and one or two others, but getting all this information compiled is a major piece of work. And I think it's really important to put it in a very readable, friendly way, if you see where I'm coming from, rather than being too technical and whatnot, otherwise it doesn't from, rather than being too technical and whatnot, otherwise, um, it doesn't serve its purpose. It is aimed at people being able to understand what has been achieved, well, putting frankly, plain English, which I'm always in favour of. Thank you.
Uh, councillor Smith and I, and then, and then councillor Beer.
Thank you, Chair. Um, thanks, this report, really interesting reading. I don't want to bandwagon, but I, I would be really remiss of me if I didn't mention the fact that on the back of what councillor Bennett said before about antisocial behaviour and particularly driving, this is getting worse everywhere in my, uh, in our district, at East Suffolk, in my ward of Melton in particular, um, you know, it's quite hair-raising, some of the driving, and, um, and I've got somebody in my ward who, who is asking for some kind of railings or bollards or something to deter, um, pedestrians in this particular case from being potentially killed, and as one of my people in my ward reported to me last week, she very nearly was wiped out by a car when she was on the pavement as a pedestrian, um, when they just lost their patience and overtook a row of parked cars who were queuing at traffic lights in Melton and nearly squashed her in the process. Um, and then when I encouraged her to report that to the police, who she is now in touch with, um, the, the onus has very much been put on, um, her to, um, make ensure that she had two witnesses, um, they talked about dash cam, which is obviously not going to have a dash cam if she's on foot, um, we don't seem to, there never seems to be money for things like ANPR cameras, um, I'm showing my age here, but by saying that what used to happen in the past is that dangerous drivers would, as long as somebody had a, a, a registration number plate, um, there would be a, a letter, I think it's probably a stretch within my lifetime to say that, um, a PC would turn up on the doorstep with a warning, but certainly a letter would, would go out to reported sightings, whereas now the onus seems to, in my opinion, uh, not just my opinion, been put far too much on the victim, um, to, to make sure that they've got two witnesses, that there was some kind of dash cam footage, and the list goes on. And, and the, the possibility of getting a TRO, Traffic Regulation Order or whatever, to install some kind of bollards, which, which could be potentially a really good idea, but incredibly expensive and slow, and I just feel like it's all a bit the wrong way around, and that people aren't being taken seriously and aren't, aren't being protected, particularly pedestrians. Thank you.
So I think the answer to that, Rachel, is if people are not satisfied, they've gone, that's exactly what we're there for. If they could just give some detail, I mean, I'm very pleased, encourage them to report it, and that's got to be the case, but then if that's not satisfactory, if we don't hear about it in our team, obviously nothing would happen, and that's really, really important. If the people are not satisfied, and if there's an ongoing problem, I mean, for example, completely different, there was a, an issue with some Yobs doing trail biking over in, um, I think over near Mildenhall on one of the estates over there, the rural crime team did some really good work and got them all, there's been one down at Pinewood as well near Ipswich, we had it at Morton Hall in Bury with boy racers whizzing around a car park. So it can be done, but please, I've got to implore people, you must report it, and if you're not getting it, let us know, and I can promise you that will get followed up vigorously, and hopefully we'll find a solution. Uh, I absolutely get the frustration, I'm not in any way glossing over, but that is part of the role we have, is to hold the Constabulary to account and find out what's been done or not been done, and if not, why not, and what are you going to do about it? So there you are, there's an offer, but if you can do that, that'd be really helpful. Thanks.
Thank you. Yep.
Very quickly, just to confirm, are you saying that if she feels she hasn't had satisfaction through the usual reporting channels, that with me, through me, whatever, that we should come to your office, is that what you're suggesting? Yeah, okay, all right, lovely, thank you.
Uh, councillor Beer.
Thank you, Madam Chair, I'll be very quick, I was just supporting your comments earlier, uh, because I think it's very important, and I think we just need to remember that in communications, and a lot of us has been around a, a long time, um, over the years, um, you don't get that response from the public, and you do go to all these hard-to-reach groups and different, um, venues and what have you, it's been happening for years. A Suffolk County Council in their major bin at the moment of the reorganisation, I think they only got, and, and I can't remember the exact figure, but I think it was about eight thousand people responded, which we thought was brilliant. I mean, but when there's seventy-five thousand, seven hundred and seven thousand population, you can see how small it is, members, getting people to respond, and there's a variety of reasons, half of them think we don't listen, the other half, uh, think that, well, there's no point writing to them, they come and tell us, we tell you, um, and at the end of the day, I, I think we're doing as much as we can possibly do, yes, try and improve it, but I don't think we'll ever get the response that we should get. And I say to the public, well, have you followed through? Have you made a complaint, or have you told them? Oh, well, I'm telling you. I said, well, yes, all we can do is forward it, but if, if they would answer these surveys, and they don't, then they're quick to comment when we put their bills up, or we do something different they don't like, and they feel let down. But I, I don't know the answer, I really don't know the answer to this, other than that we need to strive to do better all the time, but I think you've done as well as you can do. I really do.
Thank you for that, Peter. Uh, so I think, um, I think we're sort of ready to, to move on, uh, so I just want to go to, um, the recommendations, which are on page seventeen of our report, um, but I think we've had a, an interesting round of questions, and I think we have to, um, delegate to the Chair of the Panel, production of a formal report to the PCC, including any recommendations made at the meeting, uh, and I think we've got a sort of recommendation, may not be quite related to the annual report, that we're going to try and coordinate a letter to the Home Office about the funding formula about the same time that you're going to do it. Uh, and I think we've got a recommendation for you to possibly look at the categorisation of the comments. Uh, is there anything else that we've actually got as a, as a recommend? I think those are the only recommendations that we've got from this discussion, unless I've missed something. Um, Simon?
Um, yeah, there was just a runabout ensuring the, the intro of the data in relation to, um, the compliance with Victims' Code.
Yeah, yeah. Put that as a third recommend, a third recommendation, um, and, um, the, we will produce a formal report, which has to be ratified by, signed by me, I think, and, and then that gets published, uh, and we can, can we agree that the panels, and then we have to agree that our report is published on the Suffolk County Council website, our report on the annual report, is that's right? Um, so that is what our recommendations are. Do we have a, a show of hands as a vote that we're all in favour of that? Thank you. Um, right, so now we can move on to item number six on our agenda, I think, I think that was it, wasn't it, Rob? Uh, item number six on the agenda, uh, we've got to, um, provide the panel with an opportunity to question the PCC on the twenty-five, twenty-six financial position and receive an update on the use of preset funds, uh, and I'll draw the panel's attention to the key lines of inquiry, which are set out on pages sixty-five to sixty-eight of the papers. Uh, but before opening the floor to the panel for questions, I'm going to invite the PCC to update the panel on the twenty-twenty-five to twenty-six financial position. Thank you.
Uh, thank you, Sarah, I thought the conclusion of the last item reminded me of a yes minister, but nothing's really changed in all those years, but there we go. Anyway, um, yeah, on, on the, um, on the finances, so, um, I think overall we are in a sound position, I would hesitate to say fantastic, good, but we're certainly not in a difficult position, and I think that's really important to emphasise that, halfway through the financial year, and, um, at the moment, the latest forecast, those again, who saw the, the papers and the accountability, we look as though we're going to have a surplus of income, um, stroke, some underspend of 2.35 million quid this year. The overall budget, if you remember, is a hundred and ninety-seven point two million pounds for this year. So that's good, it's a very small percentage and things can change going forward. Um, reserves, um, are in a healthy state, particularly for capital expenditure, which is good, because we've got some big things coming up. We do need to make sure the Constabulary gets on with it, and when you're programming these things with project management, make sure things are delivered on time and on budget, and we're very clear on that, that is a responsibility of the Constabulary, that we are there to hold them to account. Um, one small, I suppose, um, highlight, which I mentioned, um, earlier, those of you on the panel will remember when we discussed the finances and the budget and precepts, et cetera, back in January, we were getting nine hundred thousand pounds for the neighbourhood policing guarantee, well, actually, after we'd set the budget, that was doubled to 1.8 million, for those of you who are good at maths, and obviously, it's not a lot, but it's a lot better than nothing, and I don't want to be churlish about that at all. And we have had it confirmed about the hotspot policing, so we've got a million pounds for that for this year, like we had last year. We thought that would happen, uh, which is good. However, here comes the other issues that are causing a bit of a challenge, problematic, or however you like to describe it. So the uncertainty going forward about what we're going to get for financial settlement, and the fact it's delayed for further months, makes forward planning pretty difficult. We're going to take a pragmatic view, uh, I think at the moment we'd not like to see much change. I don't know what will happen to council tax, although my view's clear of what it'd like to happen, but I do have to add the caveat, if we are in a position, we don't put it up to the maximum, whatever it may be, what will be the implications of that, and look at it longer term. I can't say any more than that, because I actually just don't know at the moment. Um, but there are a few points here just to emphasise, so the increase in employers' national insurance that came in on April the first, and the lowering of the threshold, and the increase of the minimum wage, has presented many organisations and the Constabulary the difficulty. So we are not being funded for all the national insurance increase, the, um, Home Office refuses to pay for police overtime contributions, well, we rely on police doing overtime, I think that's reprehensible, so we're short of getting on for 300,000 quid, that's an estimate, okay? That's roughly half a percent of the council tax. Um, so we've got to look at that, um, and we'll have to see where we get to. We're also in the position, we don't know what the pay award for staff is this year, normally that's announced in time for September, we know the police settlement is 4.2%, that hasn't been fully funded either, so there will be a pressure for that, not so much this year, but for next year. I'm assuming the staff award will be the same at 4.2%, but that's an assumption. Um, why there's been a delay in this is completely beyond me, just buck up and get it dealt with, please, let me know where we are. Um, the other thing that has been extremely disappointing, and, well, I'm, I'm cross about this, and this is a political point with a small p, the reduction in victims' funding for this current year at 4.2%, I think is reprehensible. There are other things governments decide to spend money on, I'm not going to go into detail there, but I do put it to everybody here, things like domestic violence, violence against women and girls, compromising what's been done there, I just don't understand it. And I've raised this with various MPs, but there's been no change. And, um, if you then put on the cost pressures, so the IBF contract, the extra costs of national insurance to them, um, for example, is over 30,000 quid a year, drew no fault of their own, and I just put it to you, where does the money come from? So I'd just like you to bear that in mind, you don't have an answer to that, um, but this is a serious issue. And the other difficulty that is, but I've resisted it, we've had one or two private sector companies, well, their costs have gone up, can we have more money? And I've told them to politely get knotted, um, because if you agree a contract, you agree a contract, and I'm afraid we are not there to have the largesse of the taxpayer to support other contracts. I have to say, I'm disappointed with the reaction of various other PCCs and chief constables who seem to think we should just fold over and pay it. Well, I'm sorry, I don't, I think I'm about the only one in the whole of the seven forces who's resisting it, um, because I just don't agree with it. We can all say we've got extra cost pressures, um, and therefore you all have to deal with it accordingly, like we have to in the Constabulary, you have to do it in local government or whatever, so, you know, they should not be immune from that. But we'll see where we get, we haven't finished that one yet, uh, but I just wanted to share that with you. Um, it's good we've got the extra money for Safer Streets, which is rolling into this year, uh, but that will finish, we spoke about that earlier. And I suppose the other thing, just to, to, just to point out to people, is that the, um, extra demand on policing, when you have mutual aid, looking at policing demonstrations or whatever else happens, which is quite topical at the moment, um, does put an extra strain on the Constabulary. Whilst we do get fully compensated financially for that, please remember there's a sort of quasi-opportunity cost, if you're not doing that because your officers are off doing whatever else it is, well, you're potentially missing out on one or two things, um, back, back here. Um, having said all that, I think we need to do better on getting more money, certainly for, um, capital expenditure projects which benefit the whole community, and obviously I'm talking about section 106s and community infrastructure levy, done very well in the Mid Suffolk area, well, I would say that, wouldn't I? But the Stowe Market, uh, the fire station, we got 432,000 quid for that, and of course in some areas where they don't have a community infrastructure levy, we can't do it because it doesn't exist, um, but I'll leave that thought hanging. Again, that's not, I'm not seeking to put blame on anyone, but it is a useful form of, of funding. Um, we've also got some money agreed at Suffolk Public Sector Leaders in the Poor Business Rates Fund. May I just point out another thing here, that money comes from business, um, this is a personal view, I think it was disappointing, um, that last year, which affects this financial year, when some of that money, the Poor Business Rates Fund, I believe, was used for supporting local authority finances, particularly doing a council tax reduction scheme, I don't have a difficulty with that in principle, but using that money does present a problem for the Constabulary, because if there's a council tax reduction scheme, that hits our budget and I've got no means of getting that back. So the current financial, that's cost us about a quarter of a million quid. So when that debate comes up for next year, I just ask people to please bear that in mind of the implications, because that's, um, it is a bit of an issue. Um, so, but having said that, the collaboration with Norfolk initiatives like Right Care, Right Person, um, that fairly deep collaboration with Farm Rescue and the estate is important, and that's probably the best one in the whole country. Any other ideas for helping with that going forward, we shall, um, certainly look at. So overall, yes, it's difficult and challenging, but I don't want to be here full of doom and gloom that everything's a disaster, because it certainly isn't the case. A good job, we've got, um, reserves, but I don't think reserves are there, they need to be earmarked, we've said this many times before, what exactly are they there for? You have to have, like on the Belbin formula, a three percent of your NRE to cover that, but the other ones are all earmarked, and I look forward to talking about that, not today, but certainly when it comes to the budget setting in January, our next mega meeting, um, we'll be able to have a good look at that. But I've told the Constabulary, you have got to be far more detailed and comprehensive of what it's for. Um, and there are, I've got the details, but, um, it's going to be done this year, I can assure you on that, all right, then we can have a proper debate. So, thank you, Sarah.
Thank you. Um, so, uh, anyone got any questions or comments they would like to make on the financial report? Councillor Smith and then councillor Chester, and then Simon.
Thank you, Chair, just a quick point, if you can just clear some, clear up some confusion in my mind, anyway. On the one hand, you're saying you've got all these underfunding of various things, and then you're saying you're projecting an underspend of 2.35 million pounds, so could you explain that to me a bit?
Of course, thanks, David, good, good question. So most of that money, and again, I don't want to keep referring to APP papers, but it is set out there, most of that is actually, um, a lot of it is down to extra in, interest in income that's been earned, for example, we are fully covered for our costs for the, dealing with sizable abnormal loads, et cetera. Um, the strategic policing requirement that we actually have to fulfil, when they're required to go from police demonstrations in London, and sometimes I'm afraid some of the officers have to do that for three or four weeks on the trot, and there is a bit of a burden on them, and I would ask people to think the extra burden put on policing, where they have their over, their, um, shift patterns altered and changed, so we do get money back in, in for that. We are only halfway through the financial year, um, there is a, a little bit of an underspend, I think, in some pay areas, I haven't got the exact details, and that's because of staff vacancies. Um, but I wouldn't want you to run away with the idea that we've got loads of money sloshing about, it's a one-off, it's halfway through the financial year, and that is subject to change, but a lot of it is extra income earned, which is unpredictable, um, but also the interest rate on, um, any reserves we've got. And if you know where we like to be, or anybody knows where we like to be for interest rates going forward, it's, they, they're going to, I think they're probably going to remain high. The assumption was made back in January that interest rates would average, um, below three percent for this year, well, I think that was completely wrong. The Bank of England forecasts are not very good, if they had any forecast, it's a, it, so that's one of the reasons why, if you've got about 30 million quid of reserves, which includes a lot for capital expenditure, okay, it's very difficult to say what it will be, but again, we've got the issue of inflation, what difference will that make? What's going to happen in the budget? I've no idea, but if, for example, say, fuel duty was increased, and I don't know whether it will or not, whilst you get the VAT back, you do not get the excise duty for fuel, so that might be another cost pressure, I'm not saying it is, I don't know. Um, but that's how it works, so a small amount of it is another. So a small amount of it is an underspend. And I think we're certainly less than a million, which is less than half a percent of the budget. The rest is about extra income that was, uh, not forecast or predicted at the time. So I hope that explained it. As I say, halfway through the financial year, two point three five million over, out of a hundred and ninety seven million quid is a pretty small percentage. And it's far better that way than the other way.
Yeah, just quick, so, so when, that's a difficult question to ask. So when do you expect you might have, definitely have that extra money? You could say on perhaps extra, extra officers. Is there a point where you come, where you think, well, okay, we're safe now to spend that money? If you dominate to go with more reserves?
Well, that's a perfectly fair question. That's an ongoing discussion. And if we can get extra officers, for example, then, then we'll do it. So we're not wedded to that ceiling. I know we're going to talk about, um, detective recruitment later, but, um, again, there's some good news on that. There is not a, a ceiling for that and the more we can get, we will, provided, we've got to be reasonably careful and sensible because our levels of debt are quite low in Suffolk. We do have some, I think it's about five million quid or something. Some forces are up to and over and beyond. And we're never going to do that in Suffolk as long as I've got something to do, I can assure you. So getting the balance right, and it's always difficult, come back to Peter's point about council tax and putting all that together is an interesting recipe. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, councillor Chester.
Thank you, Chair. Um, the uncertainty principle in funding is always worrying. Um, and I know much of this goes beyond your office, the office of PCC. Um, but we have to sell this to our, our councils in future with the looming precept coming up, and we don't know what it's going to be. And certainly at ward level, explaining to the various members of my ward what the, the ins and outs of precepts and how it affects council tax is worrying because they'd like to know in advance what's happening. Now, I'm sure from your perspective, you bring pressure to care on national government to, 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 to clear the way forward on what your likely precept's going to be. Um, so I, I'd just like to know how you work that, how you lobby. And I, but I did have a question here. It relates back to the, the previous item, but I think it's valid here. You mentioned collaboration with Norfolk Constabulary, um, and, and that's worked fairly well, I assume. But there's one item here and it relates, it's on page fifty six about you terminated an agreement in relation to the shared services transactional, transactional centre. So if things are working well, why was that terminated? For what reason and what was it indeed? Page fifty six, and it comes under Norfolk Constabulary. And, uh, it's, uh, the last paragraph halfway up on the right-hand side in this financial year. And a terminated and an agreement in relation to the shared services transactional centre.
So the, um, shared actions track, transaction centre, just call it that, it's a bit of a tongue twister there. Um, now, well, that's, that's to do with a lot of, um, back office functions, using technology rather than manual input and so on. So I think that, uh, it's a bit early to say yet, but that's, that's what the investment's for. And if you like, that's a fairly, not something you'd get a huge amount of public interest in, to be fair. So what we would normally do, if there was extra investment coming in, and that will probably be relevant for the, um, coming year, um, Sandra produces what we call the grade book or management information, and you've probably seen that before, Mike, of what money has been used for. This year, it was more or less about, um, holding your own, bearing in mind, as I was saying earlier, we have to keep that number of police officers regardless. We can't afford the risk of, of losing out on that. We're always looking for better options for joint working partnerships. Uh, we have a separate partnerships hub, for want of a better word. Um, that was part of the, um, changing the policing model back in December twenty three, but that's now working really well. Um, and it's how can we can share things, using ASB as an example of how, um, that will, will develop. Um, and it is always a hard sell at ward level, so we'll do our level best to keep you informed. And if I could just say, Sarah, I think you've got a briefing which I'd encourage you all to attend. Is it on November the ninth with our chief financial officer?
Definitely in early November. I can't remember the exact date, but, but Adriana will tell us.
The ninth or something? Seventh, anyway, somewhere around there. No, ninth, ninth is remembered Sunday, so it can't be. Right. I knew the, the date in mind. Um, but no, that would be really helpful because she'd be able to answer more questions in detail. Um, and if there are any other detailed questions, I mean, um, we've got assumptions. She'll be, I've got a, a briefing note here. Um, but I think that's rather than today to go through that in great detail, you'll have more of a focus session looking at capital allocations, the assumptions for next year on inflation, interest rates. Um, hopefully, but maybe there will be a little more certainty. For example, we have been told we will not get a definite answer to where we'll be for our victims' funding for some time. We don't know when yet. Well, how can you plan ahead if you don't know what we've got? Um, and I'm not trying to be Reagan avoiding the issue. The problem is, without some definitive answers, it will be, well, it'll be a forecast and conjecture and, um, who knows? So I hope that helps, but I hope that session on the seventh.
Yeah, I, I, I think the sessions, the, the session on the finances will be very useful, so do come along if you can. Uh, did you, are you all right with that, Mike? Um, so I've got Simon and councillor Beer. So Simon?
Thank you. Uh, I was going to pick up on the, uh, the underspend, so councillor Smith already talked you about because, uh, I think the APP report actually said one point seven million underspend, so it's obviously increased between September and now already to two, I think you said two point three five. Um, yeah, I just, you know, with the five percent precept increase last night, while it's only kind of about one point five percent of, of the total budget, you know, there is hardship within our communities and I, and I do, would urge, when we did have discussion with Collette on the seventh, that there is a consideration about that. But that point's been addressed. The, the main point I wanted to make was about the capital programme and I was really interested to hear your comments about the contracts. And I wondered whether that was related because you, you had a carryover of, well, uh, the end of report says naught point nine three million slippage. Um, and I think the latest APP report says either one point zero four or one point six, depending on its shared costs or whatever, um, which are six million agreed spend. And I accept there are other budgets, that's quite a lot. And obviously, the impact of inflationary costs of any slippage i- is quite considerable, which, which puts pressure on your capital programme, which is already, um, struggling. So I just really want to know how that was managed and how, how the constabulary or how you can support the, the request to, to manage that capital programme a little bit more effectively because that's a almost twenty percent kind of slippage, um, which is quite a lot. And if they're not going to be delivered, you know, there needs to be consideration about that because that's just adding cost at every turn, um, which does worry me, um, around, on that capital programme.
Um, Simon, a very good question. I absolutely agree with you and, um, I'll be diplomatic here. Let me say this, that when we come to the control room, there have been protracted negotiations which are driving me to distraction. However, we are nearly there and that will be a major investment. My considered view, for what it's worth, is that there needs to be a bit more commercial nous in what's going on. Now, that's down to the chief constable, but let me put it this way. Um, since Collette arrived just over two years ago, we have been more, how can I put it, interventionist? I think if that's the correct word, because you're absolutely right. If you delay things and when inflation is at around four percent, you have a risk of delays, extra costs, which when you originally got the projects, uh, I suppose, designed, and that may have been a year or so ago, gone are the days where it was just one percent or so you can absorb that. So that's really, really important, that there is a real focus. And what I would like to see is a single person who's actually accountable for that. If you're running this project, oh, sorry, turn that off. Sorry about that. Um, and, um, I should have done that one. They're all falling apart now. Um, no, and it, we, so we are, so when there are major projects, we're going to make sure we have someone sitting on the actual board, um, be it Sandra or the chief exec or the chief financial officer, because we've got to keep a real focus on it because you can't just keep chucking money at it. So I hope that reassures you. And, um, as I've said to the constabulary, yes, when you delegate things, I want you to understand it is not abdication either. And don't just come back and think we're going to throw extra money in because if you're accountable, you need to do it. And if there's a difficulty, talk to us before it becomes a problem.
I, I look forward to seeing future reports with that figure coming down then.
Yes. Yeah, but that, but that is a really important point. You can't forever, see, if you go back like Mike was saying, talk to ward members, well, you keep saying you're going to do that and so on, why is it always late? Why is it never ahead of schedule, et cetera? And I know that does happen in the private sector as well, so I'm not trying to be unreasonable. But you've got to have real focus and I do think it's down to, you can't design these things by committee. There still has to be one key point there, who's actually accountable and paid accordingly and ridden reverse if you don't do it properly. But that communication internally is also important, but I'm sure you know where I'm coming from. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, councillor Beer?
Uh, thank you, Madam Chair, but all my questions have been asked, but could I just clarify, reservation reserves will come to us in the January the thirtieth meeting. That'll be the latest up to date on that. I think that's what you said. But is the total amount of underspend two million, two point three nine million or two point three five million is as of today? Or, you know, when you prepared this report? Two point three nine million, the underspend? Or was it two point three five? I think some, I heard somebody say. I've got down two point three nine. And I just want to be clear that that's what we think it is today. I know that can all change by the time we get to January, but that's a very healthy figure at the moment. Can you just clarify?
I would, I would say, I think that's a question for Collette, she's not here today, but just to get the accurate answer, but that will all be revealed, definitely. We did speak about that yesterday and that's one of the reasons you're looking forward to coming and speaking.
It's in that region, sorry.
Oh, yes, yes.
Well, that's fine. We're, we're not far out.
No, 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 no.
Hopefully it'll be the, the higher one. I'll be happy with. But anyway, we'll wait.
Assume it's the higher one and then you'll be pleasantly surprised if it's the lower number. Um, and, and, and I presume all of that will be, um, we'll, we'll get that in the briefing in November. Yeah.
So one of the other issues that does happen, if you've got some property sales, you never quite know, or purchases or, I'll leave you to think about that. Um, you never know when it'll actually happen, but it's got to be the right deal. And I think you can read into that what you like, but I'm very keen that we get the right deal, not just a quick deal. I'll leave that thought hanging.
Yeah, it, it, it hasn't been quick, anyway. Uh, right. Does anyone else have any further questions? Councillor Bennett?
Thank you, Chair. Um, I wasn't going to say anything, but, um, just referring back to the Safer Streets programme. And that's just finished. I just reread the, uh, the bit there that says these, these projects all involving ASB had, um, come to completion. In that, we know that doesn't mean that all the issues they were addressing have been solved. I was just wondering, given the financial situation that, that we've been discussing, do you give thought to continuing with projects like that in, in, in other ways? You know, maybe the Home Office grant has stopped, but the sorts of amounts that you're talking there are not massive amounts, but presumably they, uh, make quite a difference or they could be tried in, in other locations?
Yeah, so shame us to know we always do that and this is not just a throwaway answer. So what happens in the way we go through the various lines, the constabulary will give us, I don't know what, end of November, beginning of December, a spreadsheet with about a hundred odd lines on it. And we look at those forensically, whether we agree or disagree. And again, you get to this tired old debate, what's operational and what isn't. Most of it's in the public interest, so actually it concerns both of us, in my opinion. And we will look through what they think they can either, um, shave some money off or spend a bit more on, with the overall assumptions that you're making about pay rise, inflation, et cetera. And, um, we haven't seen that yet, obviously, but there will be a very comprehensive list, not done just on each, um, portfolio, but going to each department under that. And we will need to question, well, how is that going to be better or worse? Are there other things that are, need to be prioritised? Uh, and that's part of the whole process in November before we come back to you. Um, well, in January for looking at it, but obviously the medium-term financial plan has to be written before that and prepared using all those different parameters. But, yeah, the, the, I suppose the overall caveat here is you want to try and at least maintain what you're doing and keep it going. And that does include projects like that. Sometimes that depends on what, um, other, other organisations involved in it, what are they going to offer? Are they going to do the same? Uh, and that can be the more tricky area to look at because obviously if it were local authorities, what settlement are they getting and what are they going to prioritise, et cetera? So it is about working together, but that's how the system works. So it's not really until the end of November, uh, that we'll have a much better idea. The difficulty, of course, if the budget makes a difference at the very end of November, then we'll have to look at that again. But that's how it works. So I really can't say much more apart from the fact that obviously when you've got some piece of work, various initiatives and projects that work well, well, you'd like to keep on with them, definitely. So we'll do, we'll do our best on that.
Are there any further questions on the, uh, financial update? Um, if there aren't, then we, we have a recommendation on page sixty six, um, where we note the information provided by the PCC and, um, we can make any recommendations or identify any further actions required as a result of the update. Um, I don't know that we've had any raised, but clearly we are all looking forward to the financial update, uh, in November, when hopefully more of the questions that are raised will be, we, we might have a bit more certainty. I know we, we obviously don't have certainty because we don't know what the government funding is, but, um, we can, we can probably have a, a more detailed look at the finances then. So I think we just have to note the information then. So could I have a show of hands that we're happy to note the information about the financial update? Thank you. Uh, right, so that is okay. Um, right, I'm going to propose that we do have a five-minute break, um, five-minute comfort break. Um, so can we come back at, um, twenty past? That's actually seven minutes by my watch. Um, so can we just have a break? Um, just a quick comfort break, don't, don't go too far and we'll be back at eleven twenty.